Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we'll carry on. We do have a delegation. It's here. Kathy Ennis and Carolyn Laterno from Beaver Valley Outreach. Come on down. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Warden Hicks, county councillors, county staff.
I'm just gonna ask you to scream right into that microphone if you don't mind, yeah.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. My name is Kathy Ennis. I'm the board chair of Beaver Valley Outreach. With me is Carolyn Laterno, who is our executive director. With the exception of councillors Soever and Bart Nicky, many of you around the table may not be aware of what our organisation does. So before we ask you for money, which is why we are here, we would like to explain who we are and what we do. Beaver Valley Outreach began in 1983 and became a registered charity in 1998. So we've been around for a while. In the package that we gave you, sheet number one shows the reason for our existence. Our vision is about helping to create a healthy and vibrant community. We also have a mission and a value statement, and currently our board is working on fleshing out our new strategic directions for 2019, 2021. As our community has grown, we have grown. However, we continue to maintain our grassroots culture. We also have remained an independent organisation, preferring to extend our reach through partnerships with contributing to community initiatives and by assisting smaller groups and individuals who are making good things happen in our community, which is our model. If anyone comes to us for help, we try to do whatever we can to assist, and we have over 300 volunteers and 18 staff who help us to do it. We'd like to show you a short video which gives you a feel for our community roots.
Gratitude.
Phenomenal.
High quality sound.
People.
Listen.
Survival.
You.
Well.
Reliable.
His safety net.
Inside family.
There's so many things I think that people don't realise that they don't know about BVO.
I wasn't really aware what BVO was or what it did. And so probably like most people, I first came to the China Shop.
That's where shop is, is a part of what we do. Our children's programs are a part of what we do, but then there's so much in the middle that people really don't know.
We service the whole gamut of the age range from babies right up to seniors, and there's something for everybody.
We provide direct programs and services to families and individuals that make a difference in their lives.
If somebody needs it and they've got it, then we give it.
They're an organisation that assesses maybe some of the shortcomings of services from, as they would say, anywhere from the cradle to the grave.
They're kind of like the fabric of the community. They're there, they're underlying so many services that we have and so many important aspects of where the community is.
BVO can only do so much, so how can we help them do more?
People that are here are volunteers, that's what makes BVO tick, and they are at the forefront all the time. It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful environment for people who want to give back.
It's a great organisation. If anybody can afford to, at this point, to make a donation to, to help out, I would encourage them to do so, yeah.
You know, it's, I guess it's, but they, they're in the business of taking that money and making good things happen.
Every little bit helps to contribute to helping this community.
I am BVO.
Je suis BVO.
Je suis BVO.
I am 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 BVO.
Would you please look at the second sheet in your package, which shows the organisational structure of BVO? And I would like to ask Carolyn now to give you more of a first-hand look at what we
So our mandate is to fill gaps in programmes and services in our community, as some of the people mentioned on our video. An example would be when we filled the gap of licensed childcare provision after the local daycare closed its doors. We also filled the gap of childcare during summer and school holidays by creating BVO Summer Fund Day Camp. Our numbers and waitlists continually validate the importance of these programmes. Breakfast Club, Good Food Box, and our early-on programme also fall under our umbrella. Part of the work we do in our community involves helping people in need. We do this by providing emergency food and food cards through our Good Neighbours programme at Foodland, where members of our community can add 25 cents or more to their grocery bill. We also provide information sessions to seniors, and this past holiday season, 76 households benefited from our Christmas hamper programme. The majority of folks who visit us come to us for three main reasons: housing, transportation, and emergency food. Some of you may be surprised to know that we have approximately 30 to 40 visits per month from families and individuals in need. And I think that's surprising for people in Thornbury. People think that we're, we're a very healthy community financially, so there are the hidden people that we see. Through these visits, I am able to gather information, make referrals, and sometimes solve problems quickly. Recently, I had a conversation with the single father of three in my office. He's got three children and every, that come every weekend and on holidays. I found out that he was living out of a cooler because his fridge was broken and he couldn't afford to get a new one. We were able to provide him with a new fridge, for which he was very grateful. It is not unusual to see people who have received support return to us in order to give back themselves. For example, some of the people that you saw in our video had previously received support and were happy to participate in that video to share our story. Some have moved on and are able to make donations. Others volunteer in our programmes or help with fundraising, fundraising activities. For example, a woman has helped us made pet beds out of recycled materials, and then she has sold them for the benefit of BVO. Through our research and other local information, we estimate that we touch 1 in 3 households in the town of the Blue Mountains. We are proud to be a major recycler in the county, diverting thousands of pounds of good from the landfill through our treasure shop. If you look at page four in your package, it shows in more detail the impact of our programmes and services that are, that they have in our community. We've also included our 2018 annual report, which contains more information about BVO.
We hope that you can now see the value of our work, but let me back up a bit to explain why we moved to our new location. From the early 1980s on, BVO expanded so much that it needed a permanent, stable place from which to operate. The board took the plunge in 2002 and purchased the old fire hall on Bruce Street in Thornbury from the town. They did extensive renovations, embarked on a fundraising campaign, and thanks to generous support from the community, they paid down the mortgage in under five years. That served us well, our building, for 17 years, and had three more renovations to improve our ability to serve the community. However, populations change, government regulations change, community needs change, and eventually renovations can no longer meet the needs. Accessibility problems, crowded and unsafe conditions in the storage area of our treasure, or sorry, the sorting area of our treasure shop, and in our parking lot, lack of storage space, and lack of privacy for people accessing our services were some of the difficulties that we faced in our Bruce Street location. So once again, BVO saw an opportunity and took a big step. We purchased a building in the downtown core of Thornbury, we renovated it, and we added a freight lift. We sold our Bruce Street building, we took out a mortgage, and we embarked on our second capital fundraising campaign. In June of 2018, we moved into our new building, and it immediately felt like home. We are now on one floor and therefore fully accessible. There is privacy for those who come to us in need of help. We have dedicated space for our seniors programme and proper workspace for our staff and volunteers. We no longer have to rent off-site storage because we have plenty of space in our basement. We have a large parking lot, which somehow seems to be full every day, and leading us to agree that if you build it, they will come. The capital campaign was very successful, but we still have a ways to go to pay down the mortgage. That's why we're here. When we approached our own council, they recognised our contribution to the community by committing $20,000 a year for the next three years to our capital campaign. We are now asking the county to make the same one-time investment, thereby supporting the programmes and services that we continue to provide after 36 years in the town of the Blue Mountains and surrounding area. We would be very happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Council, any questions or commentary? councillor O'Leary?
Mr. Warden, I, I'm always careful at the municipal level when people come and ask for money because there's, you know, maybe in Owen Sound, there's probably 75 groups that would be lined up looking for money if, if, if you start handing it out. But I guess my question for, for you two is what separates you from the rest? And I'd also like to know from staff or a veteran councillor what Gray County has done in the past in terms of donating money.
So perhaps I'll get them to answer the question, and I'll get maybe Barb and Anne-Marie, if she's here. If she's not here, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, one of the things that I think it separates us from the rest is the breadth of our programming. We actually consider ourselves to be partners with the town in providing social services for people in the town of the Blue Mountains and some of the surrounding area. So it's not just that we do one thing. We do programming for children all the way up to seniors, and really, our interest is the health of the whole community. Did you want to add something?
I just, too, I do want to recognise, too, we are partners with the county for our children's programmes and, you know, through the daycare that we provide and, and our early-on programmes. So we do have a partnership with the county as well, which we do recognise.
If I may, and, and thank you for that, under a couple of different funding envelopes, the county does provide about $53,000 a year to Beaver Valley Outreach for various programmes and services that they provide.
And I, if I could say, I think some of that, most of that funding would go to our children's programmes, which the county would also support other children's programmes within, within the county to a similar degree. We do receive $8,000 from the county to, to help provide our Good Food Box, recreational funding, and some emergency housing dollars. So we do, we do recognise that, and those dollars go directly back to those services and, and, and the people in the community, community needing those supports. Therefore, they don't have to come to, to services in Owen Sound to receive them.
If I could, to the, I know Anne-Marie Shaw's not here. The Chippy, there's $20,000 in Chippy funds?
Yeah, that was one time last year, we did get that for, directly for housing, and we, we did spend that and, and, and more money for helping individuals that are requiring support for homelessness.
I do understand that is intended to continue this year.
So, other questions? Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Just to follow up on councillor O'Leary, does the county have a strategy to distribute funds? I mean, it's a very good programme, and we have other programmes throughout the county. Do we have a strategy for distributing funds equally throughout the, the county for similar programmes?
Where there's service provision. Barb, you speak to this because you...
Good morning. Through you, Mr. Warden. So we do have currently a social initiatives fund where we try to meet unmet needs. And I can't say enough about this partnership with BVO. They have, they do really great work with us, and we can't meet all of the needs through the programmes that we have, so, and each community is very different in their needs. And so these folks fill the gaps. We don't have a specific application. Some of our neighbours do, and it is actually on our work plan to investigate what other municipalities are doing, because we are seeing more and more of these specific needs, because groups are identifying where the gaps are. And so if we can, we could bring a report back to council with some information further on this, but I can't, I also want to just commend these folks for the work that they do and the services that they provide.
Very good. So I'm, I'm hearing that there's, oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Soever?
Yes, I'd like to applaud the BVO for the work they do, and I'd like to ask the county, where is the nearest storefront for people to receive social services in relation to Thornbury? That, the, the county one?
Barb?
Through you, Mr. Warden. We have a satellite location in Meeford at, oh, the name of it, Golden Town. And so we do provide services. We've just expanded that. We were an itinerant service over there. We are now four days a week. And so we actually have a unit dedicated to social services, so my staff, as well as staff from other agencies, co-locate there. We had a visit with Mr. Warden last week to see what actually happens there, and we do service some folks from, from Thornbury who come to that site. We've also had the good fortune to work with Carolyn and her team and bring services to community when certain issues present, when there was water crises, when there's other things going on, we are able to come over and actually come to community, because we recognise there is no transportation, and people have big barriers when we can't get to places, so we try to get the services to them.
Very good. And I have to attest to the fact that the, the people in that office really know the local clientele. I believe councillor Millen, you didn't have your hand up? No? Okay, councillor Boddy?
We seem to be stalling, so I'm thinking, I'm going to put in the floor a motion that we get a report back on, on this. And at the city, we've got a policy on giving grants for certain things. I don't know that we do at the county, maybe we should have. You know, there's, there's good groups going, doing good things. We're funding some things, we're not funding others. This sounds like it's kind of capital-related. Should we be doing that? Should we be getting into that? Who else is coming? I don't know. And so if someone wants to second the motion, we can vote it up or down, depending if we want to start going down that road, but I'll put it in the table so that we can, we can...
Yes, so, so two things councillor Boddy. One, I'm hearing that it was the intention of staff to bring a report in any case, but if you want to put a motion, I don't see a problem with that. So move by councillor Boddy that staff bring back a report on a provision of grants to nonprofit organisation, and seconded by councillor Millen. Any discussion? I saw some hands over here, but is, was that...
That's going second.
You wanted to second? It's now seconded by councillor Millen, but is there any discussion on that motion? Councillor Bart Nicky?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would like to see included in that report a full list of where the storefronts are, which communities do not have access to social service stations, and the, and accounting for where all of our social service funds are going by municipality out of Gray.
Okay.
That would, that would amend my motion, not the opposed, but then do we want to know where the populations are that we're serving? That's the other difficulty, and we're starting to get into a fairly long study here. That's, that's my only thought on that. If I may, I would accept that as a friendly, I'm not sure that I can with the rules, a friendly amendment. Again, council can vote it up or down. If it gets voted down, we'll make the, the next motion. That's, you want to second that?
So we're still, are, are you proposing an amendment? Because then we would have to vote on the amendment first. So I would need...
I'm trying to get past the emotion on that.
Right.
I would just like to point out that on the Gray County website, under social assistance, the satellite offices are all listed there, as is quite a lot of other information. So just to be clear that we, we do try to make that information available to everyone.
I'm happy to let councillor Boddy's motion stand as is.
Okay. Other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favour? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. So our report is going to come back to council. We thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you again for your very important service on behalf of the community. Okay, so we have a, are we moving to the second delegation? Are we ready for that?
Yep, he's here.
Okay.
Kevin's gonna introduce him. Kevin?
With me today is Peter Freese. He's from MTE. MTE is a municipal tax equity consultants. They're and they're paralegal, provide consulting and legal services to intermunicipalities in the area of property assessment, taxation, and municipal finance policy. Peter's been working for, with the county since 2002 on tax policy items and assessment and stuff. And back at time of orientation here, our CEO had mentioned about bringing in a consultant that is an expert on tax policy and, and assessment, and Peter has worked in the ministry as well. So we took this with my tax policy report coming today, I took this opportunity to see if he could come and speak to you as an, and give you a kind of a background on, on tax policy, so a bit of an education here. So Peter's very knowledgeable, and I call on him a fair bit for advice, and so I, he'd be more happy to hear questions and try to help clarify things here. So we, Peter has a presentation here he wants to walk through. I told him not, I wasn't limiting him to 10 minutes. This is a, a deep topic and lots to it, so I wanted to give him enough time that you could, that he could explain a lot of this to you as best he could, okay? So, Peter?
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden and councillors, for having me here today, indulging me in a, in a little bit longer delegation than, than probably normal. I am going to go through a number of things. I'm going to start with some really basic, high-level, sure I want to do, basic, high-level concepts, just to orient ourselves. I'll go through that quite, quite quickly, because we're going to look at a lot of the same information. The remainder of the report really contains explanations on concepts, but it's based on your actual data and information, which makes it a little bit more accessible than if we were using hypothetical municipality in the basement of a holiday inn at a conference. So it's, it's, should be digestible, but I will go through it fairly efficiently, knowing that there's time constraints. If I do slip, skip over a slide with lots of text, if I'm not missing that content, that's there so you could read it later. And if you have questions, or I go through something too quickly, or I need to speed up, just give me the signs.
Just a quick question to the people at the back. Can you hear okay? No? So I would just ask you to speak up as much as possible and as mu, much into the microphone as possible.
Okay, I'll, I'll, how's that? Is that better?
Better? I'm seeing some nodding heads, so yes.
Yes.
And secondly, sir, do you prefer that we hold our questions until the end, or can we ask as you go?
It is, if people have questions, particularly if I'm on a slide and I'm not making it clear or there's some confusion, it's probably easier to interrupt. So as long as somebody's looking for hands, because I may not notice.
I'll, I'll look around for hands.
Thank you, Warden.
All right.
So we're going to go through a couple of key concepts. In Ontario, our individual property tax liabilities are calculated by applying a tax rate against assessment. If you've ever received a property tax bill, we know that. And assessments are based on current value or market value assessment, and we set them as of a certain point in time. So we're not updating them in real time. Ideally, those, those values reflect accurately an estimate of what the property would sell for between a willing buyer and a willing seller on the valuation date that's chosen. All values are updated every four years, and for taxpayers that do have a market value increase, the estimate increases on a, on a cycle-over-cycle basis, those are phased in. And we'll look at a lot of these numbers today. What I want to get at before we start, though, is what...
We have a question already, sir. Councillor Soever?
So you say ideally, a property's assessment, so people see a lot of anomalies. Have there any audits ever been done of how good a job the MPAC is doing in actually achieving the desired result?
Through you, Warden. Yes, one of the things MTE does is audit MPAC's work. We audit the assessment role for hundreds of municipalities annually. So we look at various things. Is the classification right? Do the values match? Is there a connection between sale price and CVA? What are those relationships? They change over time, and what's reasonable does depend on where we're at at this cycle. So right now, we're just entering a new cycle, we're finishing an old one, we're using 2016 values, phasing those in from 2012, so there's a lag. And, and right now, if you sold your home, it would, we'd expect, hopefully, higher than your, your assessed value. But yeah, so we, we do that regularly because it is an estimate. And although there's good methodologies, it does depend on data and things like that, how good it is. And one thing MPAC has done is tried to get away from sort of boots-on-the-ground, as they say, and try to do more and more with computers, and particularly in small towns, sometimes they're not picking up anomalies, so we look for those.
Councillor Soever?
Just a quick follow-up. And so how are you finding their performance? Is it great, you know, or is it... Could it, could it be better?
There are some issues with the assessment system in general that have created some We could talk about what it's, assessment, property assessment is supposed to be very stable. That's why municipalities are given the property tax, because you can't have deficits and you need to be able to plan ahead. Our system is in a bit of a hard shape right now in that there's more volatility in it than there should be. And that's one of the things that we work on with our clients to try to smooth that volatility out, or at least plan for it.
Thank you.
So when we talk about CVA, though, we're not talking about taxing obviously a transaction price. Sometimes properties don't sell for a long time. They certainly aren't convenient enough for everybody to exchange their properties on January 1st, 2016. And in some properties, never sell. So we put an assessment on a nuclear power plant, but we don't expect a for-sale sign on that. It's really about share, proportional share. We are taxing fixed real estate wealth. That is our pool of tax base that we are taxing. So in this very small community in this slide, we have four properties. They are all valued at the same. We need to raise $1,000. They're all going to pay $250. If they all double or triple or quadruple in value, they're all going to pay $250. It is proportional share. And one of the things we do get into is, we talk about dollars, and that can throw us, but really, it's shares of real estate. So when we look at this, if we didn't, ignoring tax classes for a moment, on a uniform class, straight, one class, one rate system, which there are lots of, if you had 10% of the real estate wealth in your town, you would pay 10% of the municipality's requirement. So it's a distribution method. Now, in Ontario, we don't just distribute tax based on value, we also distribute it based on use, which is expressed by classification. So if you... So if you are a commercial property, you may be, you know, different distribution. Our main classes, not all our classes are listed here. We have residential, multi-residential. These are all fairly intuitive. Commercial, those are stores and law offices, medical offices, things like that. Industrial would be properties where anything value add is going on, processing. Farms, farms and managed forests are a little different in that they have specific ownership and more of an incentive qualification to go in those. What these really do by having classes and variable tax rates, it allows us to distribute the burden differently than in that simple value only. So our property with the 10% share might not pay 10% of the tax because it could be in a class that attracts a higher or lower tax rate. And so for Gray County, what we've done, and I'm using the general royal we, is that we have our classes that represent a certain proportion of the real estate wealth. And we have altered that in terms of how we want them to share in the tax burden, in the municipal burden. So, you know, with a lower ratio for farm and managed forests, a bigger portion of the base carries a lower portion of the tax. At the other end of the spectrum, we have industrial and commercial, which pay a higher proportion. And there's a whole bunch of reasons for these and a whole bunch of rules that go with that. We still maintain linear distribution of the burden, but we stratify it by class. So if your home's worth twice my home, you're still going to carry twice the proportion. But if your business is worth my home, you may pay more on that business. So that's really how it works. And some of those inputs and variables are given to you. They're the environments you're working and taxing within. Some of those variables you set. And there'll be a number of them put forward later today that you have to decide where you want them. And as an upper tier municipality, now we're going to get into your information, the county is responsible for a host of decisions. You have to establish levy amount. How much do you want to raise for the year? You have to set tax policy such as ratios. You have to ratify tax rates. Tax rates are a dependent variable of the system. They come last. And then we have to do some other things, more administrative, setting parameters for mandatory business classes. And you can also change things like optional class structure, treatment of vacant and excess land. And we'll, we'll talk about some of that later on in general terms. In order to make these decisions each year.
Councillor, whoever?
Yes. We have a two-tier system here. So then things get complicated a little bit. So would you like to comment on as values go up in one part of the municipality, it starts to bear more of the cost of the entire municipality? So for instance, if assessments went up 20% in, say, Gray Highlands, and they're about 10% of the tax base, then obviously they could lower their mill rate 10, 20%. But county would only lower its mill rate about 2%, reflecting that additional assessment. So the person's share of county taxes there goes up about 18%. So, you know, how does the two-tier system deal with fairness and, you know, you have the similar type property, but it has more value in a certain part of the county?
Warden, may I defer to some material that's coming up?
Yeah.
Where we'll look at those numbers specifically and we'll talk about measuring shift and how to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, the question though is very important and it demonstrates what I'm talking about on this slide here. Before we make decisions, we have to understand how that landscape, those elements that have been given to us that have changed in the real world, have changed since we made these decisions last year. If we take last year's bylaws and photocopy them and we white out, we still have white out, you know, the 18 and make it a nine, then we're going to get actually different outcomes. Things are going to change. So before we make these decisions, we need to know how things have changed since the last time we made these decisions. We need to know how status quo, in this case, last year's decisions might look this year. That's our starting point. And what options are available to make changes. And then of course, other information. So there could be critical things looking forward, risks, benefits, goals that we want to bring into it. Gray County does have a little bit extra layer of complication related to Owen Sound and that unique policy setting. I'm going to try to stay away from that as much as possible today, but it does, it is a reality. So, New Year's, new outcomes. There is no, we use status quo a lot. We always say that. Status quo policy. There is no status quo. And the reason is the tax base and the assessment base, as the councillor points out, is constantly in flex, flux. And we need to understand how it changes last year. And while there's different real world forces going on to make those changes, there's, we only measure them. We categorize them in only one of two ways. Growth in the assessment and tax base or valuation change in the tax base. And the former is it grows or shrinks, gets bigger. There's more, more properties, more taxes. Valuation change is just that market value update. Are we correct? We have the right numbers? And we do want to update that regularly because it's a share. Remember at the beginning, I said it was a share? We want to make sure that share is somewhat fair. If Ward 1 is hot in 2012 and Ward 2 is hot in 2016, we want to reflect the fact that these properties are now the boom properties and taxes will shift from Ward 1 to Ward 2. So we have to measure these differently. When real base, real growth is when we change the base. And we like to summarize it as changes in state, use or condition of property. Basically, in this example, we have a vacant lot on January 1st, 2018, the end of the year, nice house there. We've picked up $100,000 in assessment. But this is real growth that we're going to apply a tax rate against. It represents more revenue for the municipality. We have an industrial installation where the operators took half of it away. They tore down a whole wing of the mill. That is going to be negative growth. The base has now become smaller, our industrial base is smaller, and we've refunded taxes or we certainly won't be collecting them on the go forward. So this is, this is real change. So we want to quantify that and we want to quantify it each year. And again, there's positive and negative growth. This slide documents that across the county, there was 1.9% change in what we call full CVA. So not phased CVA, not the, not the adjusted to protect those people that are going up quickly. This is the full value. We have offsets. Keep in mind, not all offsets are bad. Some of these would be, hey, if we're going to take residential land and build a plaza, we're going to have a negative res growth and a positive commercial growth. So some of this is offset. Some of it would be corrections, things like that. Overall, 1.29%, which is, you know, it's fairly healthy growth. It's positive. There are lots of municipalities in Ontario that experience negative growth on an annual basis. We want to look at the actual growth that we used for taxation last year, our phased CVA, which is in 2018 was two thirds, two quarters or half of the increases had been phased in. That's 1.31%. And although it's lower CVA, it's a higher percentage because we, some of the loss would have been assessment we hadn't moved into yet. Here's the key, revenue growth. What does this mean for the county, for budgetary purposes, for 2019 tax levy, those kind of things? Well, at the end of the year, there was basically close to $800,000 of additional revenue, county general levy, available to the county that was not there when you sat in this room and signed those bylaws last year. Okay? That's new money. Now, one thing we want to keep in mind is that that number officially, and I know that different people expressing it a different way, we froze our tax rates, whatever it might be, that is the number that the County of Gray can raise in 2019 with a 0% levy increase and a 0% levy decrease. That's what the law says. So that's your zero point. And each local area municipality has what we call a revenue limit. You can raise more, but anything you raise on top of that is a municipal levy increase. And it grows, not just countywide, obviously. These are the sum of property growth. So we see that in different local municipalities, the rates of growth are different. And we could break this down by class as well, and some municipalities be growing in commercial. The important thing here is that's $779,000. That is not change carried by existing taxpayers. So the taxpayers who were in, say, the Blue Mountains on January 1st, 2018, did not share in that $281,000 at all. That is new taxpayer money. Those are new taxpayers that came in and built new properties. Now, of course, some of them may have lived there, but it would have been attributable to an addition or a new garage. So nobody in their home, if they didn't change it, is carrying anything of growth. And that's one of the critical reasons why we must separate these phenomena, to keep in mind that that wasn't distributed municipal wide. That was carried only by people that improved or changed their properties or built new buildings.
Can I just say, Peter, I think when we go through our annual budgeting process, I think our treasurer is very careful to distinguish this growth-related revenue, that we never try to hide that or in any way assume that it just exists. We're very careful to make sure that that's clear about what that is. Not everyone does that, but it's something that Gray County has always done to make sure that it's very clear to people what proportion of our revenue can be attributed to new growth in the community.
Yep. To clarify, Warden, I'm not suggesting that.
No.
I probably come off like I'm parenting you, but I'm trying not to. I'm just trying to be clear. So that takes us to the end of the year. Now we know what happened during 2018. When we go to bed on December 31st and wake up on January 1st, we have a new role. We have a new assessment role. We're now in 2019. So we have to manage that separately because it's a separate set of pressures, a real world influence that are changing. So market value update is when we update to keep it more current. And one of the questions I often get is why do they call it current value assessment if we're using January 1st, 2016 values? Well, for one thing, it's more current than relying on 1940's values, which we did before, you know, 1998. The other thing is that really the current refers to current state use and condition of the property. So if your property is a home and you change it into an office, we're going to reflect that change immediately. The value may not be updated for four years, but we're going to make sure that the property is taxed as it is currently being used. So market value update, what are we trying to do? We're trying to estimate those values, what it would sell for in two different points in time. And right now, we're working on January 1st, 2012 to January 1st, 2016. We know that that house that we're seeing now was actually built in 2018, but we still go back and pretend it was there in 2012. All the properties have two value points. And to do that, we would just say, well, how much has the average home gone up? And we work it backwards. So we're not capturing anything when the taxpayer comes in and says, oh, my assessment went up because I had to put a new roof on. No, your assessment went up because the real estate market has changed and we're trying to reflect that. So our current market value update in Gray County saw things change by pretty much 12% across those four years. As you will see, that rate of change is very different on a property by property basis and on a class by class basis. Not all properties are going up the same. Why? Not all markets are changing the same. We know that, you know, residential, 4.72, fairly modest actually. Landfill and pipeline, those are kind of formula driven. Multi-res and new multi-res, they were, they were actually subject to some methodology changes which boosted those assessments province-wide. Farm and managed forests, they've gone up in the outer reaches of the golden horseshoe dramatically over the past two cycles. Those have gone up primarily by, there's a number of real world factors that have increased those values. One, low Canadian dollars attracted foreign investment. That foreign investment that wants to farm, even if it's industrial farming, they don't want to compete with, excuse me, the green parks of the world and buy in York region or Peel. So they've moved farther afield into areas that have not seen traditional value growth that high. Low interest rates have created higher sales values on farmer-to-farmer sales as they consolidate. So there's a number of real world factors that are going on there. But in the end, what it means is we're not all changing at the same rate. For those who go up, we have a phase-in program.
There is a question, sorry. Councillor, whoever?
So for farm, you say farmer-to-farmer sales, but when a farmer buys land, part of it is for, is anticipation of farming revenue. But part of his motivation, particularly if he's in a highly desirable location, is an exit strategy and eventually selling the land for development. So how is it even possible to distinguish that when you're looking at sales is, you know, it's, it's not really farm use. It should be, because it's a farm use class, you should be looking at the value of that land if it is only for farm use. But the value of the sale obviously anticipates some future windfall as it gets rezoned and developed as much of the land in the town of Blue Mountains has. And I know when you talk to your farmers, what are your issues? And one farmer told me, he says, I have no issue. I'm looking at an exit strategy in five years.
Through you, Warden. The assessment exercise is intended to get at what a property might sell for between a willing buyer and a willing seller on a valuation date. One of the things that make the property tax so important for a municipality is that it is objective and autonomous. We don't make judgments about what you plan to do with the property. We don't make judgments, for example, about your income, your spending habits. It makes it very simple for municipalities and as an accessible layer of government that sits in the community, you want to be able to understand and explain everybody's property tax bill based on these objective measures. We do not have the resources and we do not want to get into things that feed into federal income tax, like how much did you spend? How much you write off? How much did you spend on your children's daycare? We're just simply distributing the burden based on what properties might sell for. So that's, those things are not actually considered.
So am I, to understand clearly, the 11.84% market value update, that would be at the end of the four-year phasing in period, correct?
Yes, Warden. What we're doing this year with that phase-in is bringing in one quarter of the increases. All the decreases flowed through in year one. The increases come in proportionally. So this year, again, we're just bringing in, for our example house, we're bringing on another $10,000 here. So this is what we're dealing with in 2019 context. This is, this is the 2019 element of our reassessment cycle. So we have 2% or just under 2% for res, 13% for farm and so on. And we've already measured growth. So this valuation change is purely reassessment change going on here. Because of those differentials in rate of change, we are going to have tax shifts. As was discussed earlier, we're going to see tax shifts within classes, among classes, between local jurisdictions, across the county, and between less formally defined groups. Any group you want to make up of more than one property or even a single property, we can measure shifts. So if it's ward to ward, north to south, east county to west county, it's all the product of those individual tax shift and tax liabilities rolled up together. But this new assessment that we're getting as of January 1st does not raise more money for the county. The base has not changed. We've kept it the same. So at the beginning of every year, we have to reset tax rates. We have to bring them down. So we respect that revenue limit and we redistribute the tax. This is exactly how the system is supposed to work. We hold the revenue the same. We redistribute it across the new base based on the new value shares, the distribution of the property tax, property wealth, which is what we are taxing. shares, the distribution of the property tax, property wealth, which is what we are taxing. In this case, for 2019, the county rates, countywide, need to come down 2.2% to maintain our revenue limit of $56.23 million. And, why don't we, again, why are we doing this? Why are we bringing these rates down? And why don't we treat value change like growth? Well, growth is adding new properties to our community. Again, we're changing the base. We have new taxpayers. With value change, we have the same taxpayers on December 31st to January 1st. It hasn't changed a bit. The only thing that's changed is how much each of these little squares makes up in their share. So, the share switches between taxpayers, but we don't have new taxpayers. You can raise more than your revenue limit, but again, that's an increase. So, what happens at the class level? Class level, we're going to see tax shifts by each property's rate of change. Remember, we only dropped the county ratio by 2.2%. That's not going to be the right number for every property. Some properties didn't change at all, so that would be a decrease in taxes, a negative shift. If a property went up by 15%, it's going to see a positive tax shift because it has a larger share of the base. It's going to carry a larger share of the tax. Overall, we keep our revenue the same. And, to the earlier question, sorry, I skipped ahead a bit. This is, this slide here, while we see shifts, it's important to remember, that assessment phase-in program, you have no option. You can't decide to use it or not. But it is there, and it is our first line of protection against assessment volatility. What this slide shows is, if we took away that, you know, if they canceled that new, that phase-in program in the budget today provincially, this is the protection that would go away. Taxpayers are paying for that phase-in protection. Like we saw, it's a closed-loop program. If those increasers weren't being phased in and their CVAs restricted, our county rate would have dropped much further. We would have a lower county rate, and that would benefit the decreasing properties. So, while we saw farm has a shift, they are also receiving, in county tax dollars alone, over $200,000 in protection from other taxpayers, which is, which is a real redistribution of the burden. It does shift, again, when we roll up those properties and all those little shifts, we roll them up by local municipality, we're going to get intermunicipal shifts of the upper-tier levy. Because that number, again, it's right for the county, but it's not right for every property or when we roll them up as local municipalities. So, we see that there's shifts in and out of local municipalities. And local municipal taxes shift too, at the class level. So, you're going to have internal shifts. Oh, I think I did something wrong there. And typical properties change as well. These are, these are rolled up, and when we roll up the county, particularly on the local level of this, it gets a little, little, little odd because the rates are very different across the local communities, depending on their mix of assessment. These are available in the staff report, which show by local municipality, there, it would be sort of a lot to show you, be very small, but you do get a much better idea of how these shifts are happening in your local community if you look at the information in Kevin's report. We know that farm is of specific interest this year. When we're looking at farm typical, typical properties, it's a little bit more complex because the farm class doesn't attach to the whole property in many circumstances. So, the county has 7,600, almost 7,700 farm rolls. Over 5,200 of those are made up of other components. The most classic is, you know, the field and the home. But unlike, you know, your residential property, which is all residential, we don't treat the land and the house separately, farm's a bit different. So, when we want to look at the average tax on farmers and how that's changing, we like to drill a little deeper and look at the whole farm change. So, those properties, and we see, we know that there's higher magnitude changes on these properties because they have higher magnitude assessment increases. So, we're seeing some tax shift onto that FT portion of these properties, and that bears out when we look at those, those couple thousand properties that are farm-only. So, those pure FT rolls, they're going up, they're picking up a shift that's about 9.91% or $58 a property on average. But when we look at those multi-portion farms and farms combined, it's, you know, around, it's around $100, so the magnitude is, the quantum is a little higher. But the percentage change for these taxpayers, the right number is just under 5% for, for the average farmer in, across the county on a, on a, on a roll number by roll number basis.
Counselor McQueen?
If you could repeat that again, please, because if your farm has gone up 80%, and you're saying it's only going up, your tax is 5%, I think I beg to differ. Or you look, flip over the tax and you see more than $53 increase.
Yes. If, so if your property, through you, Warden, if your property obviously was going up 80% this year, then you wouldn't be the average farm. So...
The average in Gray County is 70%.
That's over four years.
Over four years?
Yes, over four years.
I did that. If you divide four and the 70, that's 17%.
Yeah, I think on a class, a class basis, around 15% this year. So, and we see that up there. So, if your FT, so an FT property, so that's just the farm class, is 13.05% the average property or $31,000. That's on the left, top-left, under the farm class-only diagram. Those properties would be experiencing almost a 10% increase, $58 in levy change. So, that's municipal levy change, upper-tier and local. General levy doesn't include education. When we look at multi-portion farms, because those other portions are flat, they're not really going up, so when we add the home on there or we add a commercial portion, it flattens out the percentage change quite a bit. There's more, there's more shift because there's more value, and those are going up somewhat, but it's more about, you know, if we take the whole pool of farms on a roll number by roll number basis, the average is 4.83% in municipal tax shift. That's before education and before levy increase. So, it's not the, you know, it's not the net year-to-year checkbook, and it's actually more than if we just did the farm analysis. So, if we just did the farm analysis, the dollars would be lower, the percentage would be higher.
Just to follow up on that, a lot of farms in that next four years are going to see a certificate increase, $1,000 to $1,200 increase, not your $58 increase per year. The method is in, are the, the numbers are on the tax forms themselves. Like, if those farms go up 70%, basically that portion of that tax is going up 70% over the four years.
Through you, Warden. We actually bring down the rate every year to account for reassessment at the county level. So, a lot of that is negated through the notional rate, which is why...
So, you're talking your $58 maybe to county, but then also your level increases at your lower level because we set the ratios, it still goes up at the lower level, too.
Through you, Warden. And if we look at the dynamic and forget the whole farm thing, just, just look at farm, and those are your farm rolls, your average farm property, they are going up 13.05% this year. But when we bring down the local rates and we bring down the county rate on the notional basis, then it brings, it cuts off, you know, from 13 to, brings that down to 9.9, 9.91%. There are offsets. It's not a direct relationship between the full-cycle assessment phase-in and the tax change. And these are actually averages of every single actual property in the county with actual notional rates for upper-tier and local purposes applied to them, and we average based on roll number. That's, that's where these numbers do come from. Often, when we see the outlier increases and we dig into them, some of them are driven by physical changes, you know, a new barn or something. Some of them are reported on rolled up. There are farmers with multiple portions, certainly multiple roll numbers, that they count as their farm, rightly so. Again, this is on the roll number by roll number basis. If you had seven farms, you're going to go up $700, not 93.
I'm speaking about individual farms.
I don't know, has your question been answered? I mean, I'm hearing a debate that...
We'll carry, we'll carry on.
You have one interpretation and the presenter has got another.
I guess my point is, the real truth is in the pudding when you flip the tax over and see it's up $250 every year, it's more than $58 bucks, is all I'm saying, based on year after year after year, during those four-year pay.
Perhaps, I see Kevin at the back of the room has something to add.
Trying to clarify again, just, the only way we can do it is by roll number. So, there could be a roll number with a $50, 50-acre farm, there could be a roll number with 200 acres. We, and we don't have the ability to figure out who owns every one of them because some of them are in different names, et cetera, et cetera. So, what we've done here is we've taken each roll number based on those averages and based on the revenue to tax rates, and I've replicated these numbers, that, that's what they are. But you're correct, Counselor McQueen, there is farmers that would have multiple roll numbers that on their tax bill, they're seeing a lot more than, than $93. But, on average, when we take all those roll numbers, that's what the averages are telling us.
Okay, so that's what's happening this year. In other words, that is where your starting point is, at the municipal, intermunicipal, sort of property level. These are how the ground has changed under your feet since last year when you made these decisions. This is the context within which you need to make your policy and taxing decisions in 2019. It is helpful, of course, to look at the longer-term patterns, and we want to recognize that there's an interest in looking particularly at the farm. So, we did a little bit of a historical drill down into this. The way we've done it is by looking at proportion of CVA and proportion of levy share. Over time, this is on the county levy, but generally, it's, that extrapolates when we deal with percentage, not necessarily dollars. So, what we see is, and this is probably a better way to show it, because it's, that's a fairly small chart. Here is the classes and the pattern that was pointed out by the councillor is clearly shown there. Just so you know, this graph would be unreadable if we actually plotted residential at its level because it would be, you know, 80% of everything and the rest of the lines would be crunched together, so we plot that at 10%. But, the share of CVA from 16 to 20, so that's from the end of last cycle to the end of this cycle projected, certainly we see an uptick in that farm class that is unique amongst your property classes. So, going from about 10% or 12, sorry, 11% to just over 16% over the four years. So, they're picking up a greater proportional share of the CVA. This shows the proportional share of upper-tier tax, and of course, this is projected into 2020. We don't know what that's going to be. But, we see that the assessment system and that tax rate system, as we ratchet down, farm is still the outlier. It's going up more than any other class. The rest of the classes are fairly flat, but its share of taxes are not going up on the level that its share of CVA is going up. And I think that's what the earlier slides were really meant to document, that there are offsetting and mutating, muting forces within the system that make the tax line not nearly as sharp as the CVA lines. And if we lay this over just with res, we see that residential, its share of CVA and its share of tax, the lines are, you know, fairly straight, fairly even. When you have outliers, they get outlier protection. They, the protection mechanisms kick in harder, and we see that our transformation and all the mechanisms in place to take us from our CVA to our final tax liability do somewhat mute out those farm increases. It's still the class that is gaining a share of the most. We're not trying to obscure anything here, but there is some, there is some muting to that pattern.
Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. So, thank you for that explanation. A few years back, with the commercial, saw a big increase. They capped it at 5%. And I guess that was the provincial directive that we're still dealing with up until today. Hopefully, we write that off. But, they did, at one time, protect a certain class for seeing a big increase where, with the agricultural side, it's more than 5% and it's not being protected off that shift. And I don't know if you have the ability to speak to that or not, but there was a time in the past where a certain class was protected by the, by a rate of increase per year.
Yes, Mr. Warden. The, the business tax capping program, which we'll talk about very briefly at the end, was put in in 1998, and we're still dealing with it. But, it's, the reason the province changed the laws on that was because they brought in the assessment phase-in and they were somewhat redundant. You do have an ability to do a municipal phase-in that is very much like capping, extremely administratively intensive and costly. So, there is a protection mechanism where you can do assessment phase-in locally, but it's, it's really proven difficult.
The reason I raised it, there was a period in time where a certain class, when they brought that in, did see a big increase at a time, and that's how they dealt with it.
Yes, and again, there was a mandatory for business and we have the optional local for all other classes. It's just administratively cumbersome, that's all.
I saw that, too. To your Kevin.
So, that's our environment. Now, we have to make some decisions. And, again, the precedent is really, it is fairly objective up to that point. This is what's happened. This is your environment. I suggest that you need to know all that in order to make informed decisions. One of the things that you have to make every year is tax ratios. So, these are central to our property tax system. They are, these are your, your tax ratios. Tax ratios in Ontario are not just an expression of the relationship of the rates. We can go into any tax system in North America, and I can give you a ratio between a business class and a residential class. But in Ontario, they are fundamental. They, they manage the distribution of the burden, and we can only set them and move them with, in a very strict and complex set of business rules set out by the ministry. Generally, we can only move them down or towards what they call the ranges of fairness. Of course, that's a very subjective term. It's not my term, it's actually in the regulation. It is what Ernie Eve thought was fair, and it hasn't changed since. And, in some cases, there's a...
Sorry, Counselor Mackey?
So, can you help us with that range of fairness? The definition of range of fairness? Because specifically to the discussion around the farm taxes today, we're at the high end of the range of fairness. So, can you help counsel with how range of fairness was established and what are some of the considerations in that?
Yes, Warden. So, the range of fairness was established, I think that really farm and managed forest were an afterthought. They were established to give municipalities direction from the province where they wanted tax ratios to go. We have to go back to where tax ratios came from. They came locally from the taxes when you were levying them independently on a class basis and levying business occupancy taxes prior to 1998. So, when you took those business occupancy taxes and you added them to what we used to call the mill rate, then you would say, "My commercial had this relative burden, my industrial had this relative burden," and we established original trend, what we called transition ratios at the very beginning of current value assessment. These were calculated and distributed, and a lot of them were very high, and the province said, "You could, if you're going to move these, you can only move them towards where we want them to be, and we feel business should pay equal with residential." That was their plan. That was their whole thought. The farm went down to zero, basically at the request of the farmers, they, it was fixed. They wanted it to be some flexibility in there. The province certainly, they've moved on their business class movement towards a more even system. The province hasn't, in terms of the education tax, has left that alone. So, that's where they came from. In reality, they just haven't been revisited. Nobody looked at them. Property tax has not been a huge provincial agenda item since the Harris government left office, and they've, like many of our rules, remained untouched. And again, fairness is really a subjective term. And again, fairness is really a subjective term. It's very weighted, but I don't know that there's any huge meaning behind it. Most of our ratios can only move down. There's a limited ability to move ratios up to read, if you had, say, a big shift off industrial, you could, in some cases, under certain formula, you can raise that ratio to rebalance. That was not made available this year until Tuesday afternoon at 4 o'clock. We did do a quick calculation yesterday afternoon at 4 o'clock and that option really doesn't pose anything for you. You would, you could possibly move your commercial up a very small smidge. But because it's a all-in game, you would be reducing pipeline, multi-res and industrial. So it's not a practical option. So really, we're moving down or within those ranges. We have a scenario here, if you're moving tax ratios, just like when we go into the new assessment role. The only variables, the change your revenue are municipal levy change and growth. Any other change is revenue neutral and we must measure it. If we said last year was our, here's our budget last year and our levy bylaw, and those were our ratios and that's how much we raised. And then we came forward and said, what if we put the farm at .24? We'd be measuring the influence of growth, phase in change, all sorts of things, budgetary change. We can't do that. We want to isolate the pure impact of a ratio change being considered. In here, we're looking at reduction of the farm by one, sort of one point from .25 to .24. That reduces that ratio by 3.84%, increases everything by .17%. There's a flow through here. Again, because it's a closed circuit, we keep that, that revenue constant. Some of what we're reducing off farm comes back through the higher residential rate. We keep the revenue the same. That would shift $90,000 countywide off of farm. Tax shifts due to policy changes, they could be predicted on two variables. How big is the change you're making and how big is each class before you make it? Whether it's a subject or another class, res is by far the biggest class. You're always going to pick up the brunt of any shift. So that would shift $90,000. Now, that's in 2019. What's that do? We know we had a year-over-year change already. We had a shift. So we have, we changed that and it increases, it obviously decreases the year-over-year shift for farm, increases the year-over-year shift for residential. That's sort of that December 31st, January 1st impact of, of that ratio change.
Councilor McQueen?
But just going back to a chart that's in Kevin's report, leaving the third year phase in, in place and keeping it at .25, it reduces...
Sorry, I'm missing you, Councilor McQueen. You're referencing what?
Table three on Kevin's report. But all I'm using it is, it's a base on what the snapshot is by leaving it the way it is. So leaving it at .25, it will show an increase of 200, or sorry, an increase of 10.63 on the farm and a decrease on the residential of .43. So I guess if the point to 25 to 24 levels that out, so there's not a decrease in the residential, is that not a bad achievement in trying to, trying to find that balance where you're not giving a class a decrease, but you're trying to find that leveling field?
Through you, Warden. This is where we get a little complicated with Owen Sound. The raw figure, and you'll see it if we went back to the growth slide that I showed you, when we rebalance the entire levy countywide, what happens is we take all of the revenue raised at the end of last year. To create the notional levy, it is done, so we know how much goes to Owen Sound in a requisition, done at the county rate. What that does, that shift is a bit of a false shift because it's showing the countywide, it's showing the Owen Sound, which isn't really happening. It's showing the Owen Sound taxed as if commercial and industrial and multi-res were at, dropped to the county level. So it creates, it creates a big shift and it's a, it's sort of a false shift. So in this slide, we have accounted for that false shift, controlled for Owen Sound's unique ratios. And this is the actual shift. The reason is that money is actually going to go back onto res as soon as that, that levy goes back into Owen Sound. Because Owen Sound's residential rate is higher. So when we bring it over, it looks like there's a negative shift, but there isn't. This controls for that phenomenon. Because we are showing shift, if we show the intermunicipal, you'll notice that it is almost identical because what we're showing or what is in the report, it is the raw numbers, but it's not what happens when that requisition goes back. So that shift was entirely, the negative on residential was entirely made up of shifts off of Owen Sound's commercial, industrial, multi-residential classes onto Owen Sound's residential class. That's not actually going to happen. So we, we controlled for that. This is purely the ratio change. This is what the ratio change is going to do to the county requisition.
Of one point.
Of one point. And if it was point, you know, if you went down to .23, it would be double that. So the status quo shift, again, controlling for the Owen Sound would be slight increase. And, and most of that is coming off of commercial because the commercial is flattened out and there's been some losses. So taxes are really shifting off of commercial and going on to everything else. Which, so we see here, we're also going to get intermunicipal shifts. If you decrease, say, the multi-residential ratio, you're going to have it come out of the multi-res rich communities. It's going to shift out Owen Sound onto other locals. If you drop the farm, you're going to shift county taxes out of the farm-heavy communities into the more urban or residential. So we see here that we see a shift at a Chatsworth, at a Gray Highlands, at a Southgate, at a West Gray, onto other municipalities. Okay, so those are, those are, I know that this can be, these are complex shifts, particularly with the Owen Sound piece. It's a real challenge to make sure that, again, that we are isolating the exact influence of each single thing. And we can't, if we don't neutralize for that factor, we can't really measure the assessment-related shift and we can't measure policy shift. So that's what we've done here. If you go back to our growth slides, which is real number, they will match what is in Kevin's as the, as the baseline. So you're going to need to obviously make some decisions about that and some other decisions. We see that by moving tax ratios, we can manipulate the distribution of the tax levy amongst taxpayers. You recall at the beginning, I said that our system is based on two things. One, relative value and use. If you read the municipal act, and it's a fascinating read, every single policy tool in that act affects one of those variables only. You can either alter the value relationship or you can alter the use relationship. That's the system. So obviously ratios, they are on the use. We can also have optional classes. Owen Sound used to have a lot more optional classes. They've sort of been collapsed. So if we want to break that, those lines up and have more tax ratios, we can do that. You do have some, obviously with the, the unique one, the commercial condominium. You can have subclass discounts or you, by default, have subclass discounts. They adjust taxes between occupied and unoccupied, used and unused property. Talk a little bit more about them. And then there's a new optional on-farm class for small on-farm agribusiness. And we also have things like the mandatory business tax capping, which was mentioned earlier, phase in. They really affect those value lines, some, in some ways, how the value line curves. But in other ways, just if you, if you're an outlier, you might be protected, vacant unit rebates, things like that. The top ones affect your levy. The bottom ones are more on the collection or administration side. So again, where you want more fine-grained tax policy, if you wanted to set the large industrial separately instead of separate late ratio, you could do that. And then we have our subclasses, two subclasses for commercial and industrial. One is vacant land and one is excess land. Right now, they get taxed the same. The difference is vacant land is one roll number with nothing on it, purely vacant. And it would become commercial or industrial vacant land based on zoning. So zone commercial, nothing there. It's commercial vacant land. Excess land is different. If we have a gas station and the city of Owen Sound says you need two acres to operate that gas station, but the parcel's 10 acres, the two acres would be commercial, the excess eight acres in excess of zoning requirements would be excess land and it would be currently taxed at 70%. Then we're going a little bit out of order here, but there's a purpose. We also have the vacant unit rebate program, which used to be part of the subclasses. The vacant unit rebate program is something that's given on an application basis. So we don't levy this. It's done retroactively. You have a strip mall, the pizza place moves out. You, the landlord comes to the local municipality and says, my tenant left in July. I want six months vacancy. And they would get that 30% off prorated to the six months once they completed all the applications and met evidentiary requirements. The program has generally functioned as it was supposed to, but it, it's had some critical weaknesses since inception and it was never touched. And it kind of got out of control. A lot of people feel it got out of control. And it's been widely, it's been widely criticized and is somewhat problematic. So, but rather than undertake, as I said, there's not much attention to property tax. Rather than undertake central reform, the previous government invited municipalities to come up with their own ideas and make submissions. So they were said, if you don't like it, tell us what you would like. And they were able to do things like change the percentages used for vacancy rebates, administrative policies and application procedures if you wanted to tighten those up, exclusions for certain property types. One of the things our clients who have kept the system have done is gotten rid of partial vacancies. They're labor-intensive, hard to verify and one of the biggest sources of sort of evasion. Or phase out or discontinue the program altogether. They've not proved as problematic in the South, but in the North, people have had problems with the vacant and excess lands. So they also offered more flexibility there. This was not reconfirmed under the new government again until Tuesday at 4 o'clock. So we don't have a lot of content, but you can request changes again to this program.
Counselors, whoever?
Is that at the, is that at the lower tier or upper tier level you can make that request?
Through you, Warden. Generally, it's at the single and upper tier level. However, based on history and what we've seen be done and some of the unique solutions, we suggest that it would not be problematic to either have it for some locals initiated by the county. We had also suggested that the Owen Sound likely would have been okay going on their own. They did, they chose to hold off on that, but... So on the surface, it's supposed to be single and upper tier. But if it's well managed and it makes sense, there's, there's a possibility to ask for things that may be a little bit different. Most municipalities that have asked for change and had them regulated, over 80% are getting rid of the program either in one fell swoop or phasing it out. And some have had updates made to their subclass discounts. That really is more something that has been of interest in the North. For example, the city of Sudbury had thousands of acres of excess land around their mines that they wanted to tax fully. The province is getting rid of these as well. So it's not just municipalities that are unhappy with these programs. This was again announced by the previous government, confirmed on Tuesday by this government. The education portion of the vacancy rebate program and the subclasses for excess and vacant land will be phased out over two years. They will be 50% of what they would otherwise be this year and they will be zero next year. So it's going to add administrative complexities this year to manage those education portions at the local level for billing and systems. We have no idea what consultation was done with suppliers or anything like that. But they are, they are phasing that out to, you know, they're going to boost education revenue on that front. What do we recommend if you want to pursue this? Well, we've done this for a couple dozen municipalities and we have a sort of a process that has proven to work in getting changes made. It would depend on where your starting point is. Municipalities start from two different positions here. One, they know what they want to do and they set out to inform taxpayers and say, this is what we want to do. Let's get your reaction because the province does want to see stakeholder engagement. The other is, well, we'd like to hear from our taxpayers. We were going to take a more creative consultative approach. And so we would do things sort of in different orders depending on where you're starting from. What we don't recommend is going out under the guise of creative consultation when you already know what you're doing. That doesn't come off too well. So if, and some municipalities have done it, you know, option A and some have done it option B. It's fairly straightforward, the stakeholder engagement and things like that. Putting a package together, giving it to the province. I believe the deadlines, this year, the last deadline for this year is August 1st. And I believe that there's, that's been sort of put off for a report later in the summer, maybe. New agri-food business subclasses. These were introduced, and this is another option, municipal policy option. These were introduced as part of the previous government's 2017 fall budget. They were introduced really quickly. Basically, what we have here, and we're back talking about sort of the structure of farms. In our simplified example, we have a farm that has a home, it has a barn, has the fields, and it also has a small commercial, you know, fruit stand or whatever it is. Right now, we would tax all these at three different classes, residential, farm and commercial. What the new subclass would do is it would take, and it kind of works like graduated taxation. These are different than the other subclasses. Our other subclasses, we can touch and feel. I can walk onto a vacant land or I know where the line is between your excess and occupied. This is all on paper. It's a mathematical subclass. We don't see anything different. We can't say this. But they say the first $50,000 of your commercial or industrial assessment, and if you had both, it would actually come off your industrial first and if there's anything left over, your commercial. We will tax at a lower rate, tax it at a discounted rate. So we're going to, you know, bring this down to 25% of that class. So unlike the farm, which is 25% of residential, it would be 25% of your commercial or your industrial. It does convey a small savings, not a huge savings because we're only talking $50,000 maximum of CVA. And that's phased in CVA. So if you're going, you know, it's not going to be necessarily sort of $50,000 of full CVA. So you could, it could be less than that. Eligible property. So it can't be any commercial or industrial. It has to be used to process or manufacture products from the farm or from the same farm business. And what they mean by that is if you have 10 farms. So not just another apple farm or another pear farm. It has to be your farm business. And then commercial subclass is the same, that you're selling farm products from your farm or your farm business. The, the commercial or industrial portion has to be less than $1 million in full CVA and it only applies to the first $50,000. You may have to opt the industrial subclass apply for 2019 or you may adopt the optional industrial and commercial. You cannot take commercial by itself. It's either both or just industrial. You cannot, although the education portion's going back to 2018, you cannot adopt for 2018 because you didn't pass a bylaw. Education tax rates apply by default. So they're going to treat these subclasses whether you do or not, which is the complete opposite to the other subclasses, which they're going to stop treating whether you do or not. So it would create some confusion in the system for sure. There are some real implementation considerations that we have to think about with this. Mostly, now, we did some modeling for the county last year and I forget exactly. We didn't identify a lot of properties and we excluded obvious things like windmills and stuff, but we didn't do site visits. This was announced province-wide. They only captured 250 properties. And 30% of those are in Niagara region. You only have 13. You only have 13 farms within the county that were tagged as eligible. We knew that they were going to have eligibility criteria that we couldn't tell by looking at the data on the computer, but this is an incredibly limited application. There seems to be some systemic issue going on here with the low application. So what, if you do adopt these, what you're going to end up doing is providing very special treatment to a tiny, tiny subset of properties. Our other concern from a policy perspective is, as we're surprised and as municipalities are surprised at the limited application, taxpayers may be surprised that they're not captured. So you may have taxpayers who are saying, "Wow, you're adopting this and I'm not included," and it could trigger people, you know, sort of being discontent, not suggesting where you should go with your choice, just some considerations to keep in mind.
Just a question there, Mr. Warden. So just to get this clear, so if you're growing potatoes and you're packing potatoes on your farm, or you're growing honey and you're bottling honey, or if you're growing apples and packaging apples, that would, up to 50,000 would qualify?
Yes. Now, I will say, some of those are already covered by other programs. So for example, apple cider, that's already been excluded from industrial, so they, they don't treat that as industrial. If you look through the assessment, there's a whole bunch of those most common types of farming activities that have already been excluded, but...
Oh, at the point, point 2.5?
Yeah.
Okay. So what would be an example of that? You've got to give me an example.
It's probably going to be something that doesn't fall into the mainstream, and that's part of why the limited application. But let's, let's say potatoes you were doing, making, let's say you're making french fries.
Vodka.
Um, yeah, possibly if you're making it, yeah, possibly. Yeah, that could, and, and in fact, I think 60 or 70% of the captured properties are wineries.
So the other question is, you talk about the industrial, but then the commercial, could you be making farm gates, or can you be making, or what would...
No, no.
So that's already, that's already eliminated.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the things that we were worried about early on, when they went and said, "We're going to, we're going to attach it to nature of enterprise." You know, a lot of these stands, okay, are you selling 50% honey or 50% ants? Which is it? And there's going to be a lot of arguing over that gray area, right? I sell knitting, but I'm spinning the wool for my own sheeps, where my neighbor's buying the, you know, wool on Amazon. What are we going to do? How are we going to, like, this is a lot of work and a lot of resources locally and impact to figure out all these nuances for a few dollars a property. That's, that's really my concern, is that we have a scarce resource.
Probably is drawing through teams because it's not really defined.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of people, I think a lot of people said, "Oh, that's going to cover me." Obviously not if you're building gates or, you know, fixing lawnmowers, which lots of farmers do, but some of the other stuff, I think people will be surprised. Okay? So that's another decision. Business tax capping, we've mentioned this a couple times today. It is going away, brought in as 1998 on a three-year transitional program. This will be our 21st year of it. So it's, it's lasted longer than three years, making good progress based on some new rules that have been implemented from reading council reports over the years. Your general approach has been to take the most towards CVA mix of tools. And we estimate preliminarily, we'll go from eight to five cap properties this year, and $69,000 in protection, which is being paid by other taxpayers, by the way, in those classes, to $25,000. This puts you in a position to potentially be out on the outside, 2021, on a very small margin, 2020. But hopefully, that's going the way, going A-way. And, that's it. I thank you for all the time.
Thank you very much. Are there further questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm going to suggest that we take a break, I'm looking at the faces, and we'll come back and continue. Hopefully, we can get to Kevin next, to the, to the guests at the back of the room. We are trying to deal with the farm tax property matter prior to lunch, so that's the objective here, but let's take a break. Consent agenda, item five. Is everyone reviewing the consent agenda? Was there anything that needs to be pulled in anyone's opinion? Why don't we put it on the floor, then? A motion on the floor, please, to approve the consent agenda as, as received, moved by, oh, Councilor Carlton and Councilor Little, seconded. So it's on the floor. I'll call the question in. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Oh, did I miss something? No, we're good. Okay, moving on to item number six, and six A. That's Mr. Webster's report. I'll need a mover to put it on the floor. Moved by Councilor Bart Nicky, seconded by Councilor Clumpus. Kevin?
Thank you. Some of the numbers I have in my report here that have already been shown by Peter and stuff, but I, I need to kind of walk you through my basis here, so bear with me, and, but I'll try to make this move along as best I can. Tax policy is an annual decision here that I...
Yes, we're going to just ask you to speak right into the microphone.
Okay. And, so I have to bring, I have to bring this report every year to council for, for your consideration, okay? Tax ratios, it highlight here that the purpose of the tax ratios is, is to manage and balance the taxation among properties based on their use or classification. Without that, you know, a $100 industrial property or $100 farm property would be paying the same amount of tax, but those are our ratios, they do those differently. Our industrial has a ratio of 1.86, and our farm currently has a 0.25 ratio. And, and setting tax ratios each year, there's a varying options we can do. We can adopt the current tax ratios, we can create new tax ratios for the year based within those ranges of fairness that Peter talked about, so in essence, we could lower some of ours as we wish to. And then, he talked about the utilize that revenue neutral transition, but he said it was very administrative and cumbersome, so we haven't gone there, okay? So, I'm on table, table one, that Peter had shown earlier here with our tax ratios here. We, I did meet with the local treasurers back on March 8th and we taught, we discussed tax policy. The two items there that they, that there's some concerns about, that they wanted further investigation done and, and we need to look at these, is, you'll see, just under managed forest, the new multi-residential class of one. That was an optional class at the time we put back in, about 2012. And that was, we, the county did that in, in essence, to incent, trying to attract new multi-res built. Was an affordable housing strategy, was a part of Randy's report, Anne Marie's at the time. And, but, and with that, and so we, we, we put that in place. In 2017, the province has mandated a new multi-res gets that, that class ratio. Our existing multi-res before those dates has a, has a ratio of 1.44. So, in essence, that, that building, depending on the year you're built, you're paying 44% more than a newer building. So, we feel that there's some unfairness there with that, and that's something we think needs looked at. The other is industrial, our 1.85 ratio. There, what's happening there is we're constantly seeing large industrial leave our communities and stuff, and become vacant and those huge tax write-offs. So the lower, you know, the lower your, lower that ratio, then the less tax exposure you have there of losses in the future. So we need to do some further analysis. There was consensus to look at these by the treasurers. The, because, the other thing too is in a two-tier structure, we have to look at what this does to each local municipalities and their local rates too, if we, if we do that. For example, in industrial, we have a municipality has a major employer that's, is in their tax base. So for our, us to arbitrarily do that here without further research and see how the impacts at locally and at the upper tier, we think needs to be done. So, that is on the work plan with, with the treasurers this year to look, and I'll be utilizing Peter's help with that, and we'll bring something back forth on that. Especially that multi-res looks, we're talking about affordable housing here at the county all the time, you know, is that something that can help if we started transitioning that ratio down? So, it is, it was discussed. I know most of the treasurers said they had been out with their budget and announced what they thought their impacts were to their average residential properties. To alter all these tax ratios right now, it would seem like a lot of discussions going on at, at the local level of, "How come you said my tax bill was, if, if we change these ratios like, like the multi-res and the industrial?" So, that's why we held off and said we'd do more, and that, get that out in advance to council here, and, and advance to that 19 or 2020 budget, so everybody understands what's going to materialize if we adopt those kind of ratios, okay? Last year, I threw this, this table, this is 2018, so farmland here, I know Dufferin County's moved off, and they went to 0.23, so I'm not, I didn't put this in on purpose last year's rates to, ratios just to deceive. What, what was a question last year from the city of Owens Sound about how our, our broad classes were comparing to other municipalities and stuff? So I, I threw this table in here to, to show you, you know, like where Dufferin County's multi-res is compared to where, where ours is and stuff. So that's what this table was put in for, where our, where our industrial stood versus others and stuff. Again, each of these, and I, you know, I've been looking at a number of things, each, each county has, and each municipality has different circumstances. And what I mean by that is, some municipalities have significant industrial or significant commercial or significant farmland, so they have reasons why they've created different ratios at times and lowered ratios at times. Sometimes they can lower ratios, really doesn't impact because they really don't have much of an industrial base or whatever. So, you know, like Perth County, for example, separated off is St. Mary's and Stratford, so a lot of their commercial industrial sits there. So it's easier for them to play with those ratios because it's really not impacting much. But, anyway, I know I was asked, "How do we compare to others?", so that's why this table was thrown in. Current value assessment, Peter talked about this, how we, how we have phase-ins over four years, and how that affects different properties differently, and how we're, how we're seeing shifts happen here. And, he's talked a number of times, we're seeing the res go down, and the farm, that's that farm impact overall, $225,000 is what the impact of the, the third year of the phase As well, we had mentioned about how that was shifting between municipalities. So, again, you're seeing, there's a movement going between those municipalities. The farm class ratio, and I think that's why everybody's here today, so, and what, what I wanted to talk about it is, I'm wanting to illustrate in this table here, is that I'm not, the CVA values that have changed from 2012 to 2016, is that 70%. That's what the OFA and the Great County Federation of Agriculture came and displayed, and that, those are the numbers. That's what the assessment values are changing, okay, across the county, from that 2012 to That, then, I was asked, okay, by when the OFA and the Great County Federation of Agriculture were here, what's that mean by the shift then that's happened in the last five years from 16? So, this table was developed to show, okay, back in, in 2016, for example, the residential had 78.37% of the total, and, and farm had 10.96. Now you're seeing that in 2019, 74.29 for the residential, and on the farm, 15.18%. As well, the levy there, so I've put in the levy percentage. So back in 2016, almost 83% of the county's budget levy was funded from the residential class, and at 19, based on the current ratios, it would be 80, 81.64. On the farm, you're going from 2.9% up to 4.17. So, I wanted to, based on, and all that, I've done tables seven through 10, to illustrate the potential impact of the various, on the various typical properties we have across the county. So the first table's table seven, and this is a single detached residential property, it's what we call property code 301. This is a property, the single detached, not on water, so, and these are broke down by each municipality. Not that Owens Sound's not part of the county, that's not why I put yous at the bottom here, it's, they have their own tax policy and how they redistribute, so I, we tried to break them out of this, okay, to be less confusing. So, in, in, this is, but each municipality, on average county-wide here, on CVA is, on average county-wide, in 2008 was 275,597 for this property code, and in 2019, it went to 278, or a 1.18% increase. In, in taxes, and on average, with that's the county and the local put in here together, they were paying 2,689. With our revenue neutral rates in 2019, that would be a combined, they'd be paying 2,638, or seeing a tax reduction of $51. And again, that relates back to that shift, that negative shift of the residential class and the shift you're seeing on, onto the farm class. This table eight is all typical residential property. This contains anything that's vacant, et cetera, on that reds class. It brought in everything and not just that, that property code of the single detached. So it would have other seasonal, et cetera, in this, and, and it just showing the different number here. It's, it comes down to a, a, a reduction of just $29 here because the, the CVA numbers are different here. Commercial, I was also asked at once, "What does this mean to the commercial activities in our county? What are, what are the average commercial owners paying for taxes?" This table was put in here to show, and this is CT and XT classes of, of commercials, so they're not your, we've excluded big shopping centers and office buildings and stuff. This is kind of trying to get to your average commercial operation that's, that's in your communities. And here, you're looking at, for 2019, a CVA of about $272,000, and they were seeing with the shifts in the assessment of a reduction of about $65. So in, in 2019, they'd be paying about $3,358 on average. Industrial, the same thing here. We've just isolated the IT and the JT, the industrial, and we've, we've taken out the large industrial, and just trying to show the smaller, smaller ones in, in our communities. Again, here on the average, their, their, for 2019, their, their county and local tax would be paying 3,780, with the shifts in the assessment, especially the, the commercial and the industry, you're seeing here a reduction here of about $80. The farm class is a, is it really considered a special incentive tax class? And, and inclusion in this is based on ownership, use, and occupancy criteria, so, and looking at the farmland, it's, and it's captured in the farm property class only is not, I don't think sufficient just to, to look at just farm property. A farm is with a resident and other buildings and other activities are going on. So, but the most common combination of a farm is a farm with a, with a residential portion. The table here was put in to show, okay, these are the, these are the role numbers that we have for farms in the county of Gray. So that first column, the 7,679, are, are roles that have the farm tax class on it. So, that's when you, if you take that 225,000 in, in assessment impact that you're seeing, divide that by that role number there, you see, you're going to get a figure of about $29. So, that's where we're saying, when we say these averages are based on what we have by role number. So that was that conversation earlier in trying to, to say, I, there would be farmers that have been stated here, are seeing tax bills that they're quoting, I'm not denying that. It's just the ability, what we can by a role number is what we can pull data from, so. Of that, of those farms, of past roles of 76, 79... Of that, of those farms, past roles of seventy-six, seventy-nine attached to other portions of thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty, so those, again, could be the residential, could be commercial, could be industrial, et cetera, but, so in overall, that, those portions there, that there's eighty-two percent of those farm properties portioned the county or of the county's role have other components on it, they're part of their tax bills, what I'm trying to demonstrate here in this table. So when I said, let's take a typical farm property change, and this has taken all those, everything that's on, the residential that's on there, the commercial and industrial, if there's any of that on there, and the farm, what are we seeing on averages here? So this is what we're seeing is, on average, that phase CVA for twenty nineteen is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars, a CVA change of about ten point six eight percent. We're seeing their municipal, their local and their county, on average then, was paying one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars in tax with the reassessment, that it's going to two thousand one hundred and eighteen, or that ninety-three dollar increase or the four point eight three percent that Peter had shown you earlier in that discussion, so. And those vary by communities again as well, and that's what's breaking that out, okay? So moved on to that tax ratio sensitivity then, so, because it was asked to bring three different scenarios of, if we change the tax ratio, what would that mean? So the first scenario here is that moving the ratio from point two five to point two four, you'd see that ninety thousand shift off the farm class and seventy-six thousand moving back to the residential class. And then the same, you're seeing intermunicipal shifts, you'd see those with the more residential and that, we'd see a shift back onto their communities, and those with the higher farm portions would see shifts away. At twenty-three percent, you're seeing a point two three ratio, you'd see from the farm, a hundred and eighty thousand of taxation being moved off and a hundred and fifty-three thousand going to the res and others, like commercial getting about fifteen thousand, et cetera. And again, you're seeing shifts against the municipalities. And, you know, I did do, did do three scenarios as a request, but you, what you're getting is, you know, a racial change of one is about ninety thousand, so, you know, going down three, you're seeing two hundred and seventy thousand, it's just the math of that, okay? The only, like I said, the only thing here is that it's mainly moving back to the residential class, it's not going to a whole bunch of other classes, you can see by this, but that's because the county's budget back in early tables, over eighty percent of our county budget comes from residential class, so that's why that's true, so. So whenever reassessment occurs, tax shifts and inevitable happen, and we have different rates of change happening within the county, and that's why you're seeing these results. This, the Ontario government implemented current value assessment back in nineteen ninety-eight, and it was in an attempt to try to bring consistency to property assessment across the province. We hear it here, at times it's not equal everywhere, we have a municipality in the county of Gray's, its assessments are considerably higher, and you'll see that in the residential table here and stuff, where they pick up a greater portion of the tax. And it's, it's the tools that I've been given by the province to, how I apportion the county's budget, and that's what these tools are. But you do have options here, and I, my difficulty with this is standing here as a staff member, I understand the farming community and there is a shift happening here, it's just all that shift, when I see a typical single-family detached dwelling paying as much or more tax than what we see as the average farm and farm residents, and that's where, for me as staff here, is what's my rationale for changing the ratio? If there's, if there's been rationales that have been given to you as politicians that you feel are important to your community, I understand that, that's why it's been brought here for you to do, for your consideration, but as a staff, I'm, I don't have, I'm trying finding difficulty in recommending a racial change based on what the numbers I'm seeing here. But these are real shifts that are happening to the farm, and like I said, that CVA of seventy percent, which I demonstrated in the report is there, so. For right now, as a staff, I've recommended as a staff to keep the ratios the same for two thousand and nineteen, so that's here for your discussion. If you want to break and discuss that here before I move on to other items of the tax policy, that'd be fine.
Counselor Bartnicki?
For you, Mr. Warden, I have a question about that shifting burden. Should we, as council, decide to drop the tax, the farm tax ratio to show the value and economic driver that agriculture is in Gray? Do we have another, other option besides the resident, just putting it on to residential? Can we distribute it in other classes?
That's the option that we can, but as Peter said earlier, it's very little impact that we could with upping those ratios and going away from the range of fairness then on those other classes, but it wasn't making any significant difference here. It's still going to end up with that, primarily the residential class.
Counselor, so ever?
Yes, thank you for that. The, the tape charts you show here only reflect the shifts that happen at the county level of taxation, no? Speaking for the town of Blue Mountains, only four percent of our assessment is farmland, so at the local level, we won't see hardly any shifts. I think our treasurer calculated it's five thousand dollars for the entire municipality, but certainly, I think our friends in Gray Highlands and West Gray and South Gate where, you know, farmland is between twenty-seven and forty-four percent of their assessment base, will see huge shifts onto their residents at their local municipal level, and that's not really reflected in these tables, which just talk to county level, is that correct?
Yeah, the shifts I was showing at the, on those last tables were at the county level.
Counselor, oh, sorry, Counselor Body, I did have you next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. It's come up a couple of times that Owen Sound's treated differently, and we haven't really talked about why, and I'm talking more to the people in the back of the room because I think most of us around the council table probably understand. Where's Murdock? I think it was two thousand and one that Owen Sound came back into the county? At that point, the province required Owen Sound to bring their tax ratios in line with the county. We were very high in industrial, very high in commercial, and why wouldn't we be? We had a lot of factories, a lot of commercial businesses that, of course, were never going to leave, and, and they have. The province first came in at that point and said to Owen Sound that you've got to, you've got to adjust now all at once, and it wasn't possible. So over eighteen years, we've been allowed to phase in to bring down the industrial racial and commercial racial, we had other ratios in there, different categories that we've collapsed within, about the last year, year and a half. And little by little, we've got to bring those down to match the county rate. It's required, we don't really have a choice. As we're doing that, we're transferring those taxes to our residential rate. So right now, Kevin goes through, based on the county rates, the county ratios, and comes up with Owen Sound's share, gives us a bill with a total, and then we take it within the city, I'm looking at you, Kevin, making sure I'm saying this right, within the city, we take that amount that is given to us by the county, we readjust it into industrial, commercial and residential. So as that industrial rate and commercial rate has changed, it's putting more pressure onto our residential, they're seeing bigger increases to try and get to the same level as the county than the rest of residences in the county will see. And again, we don't have a choice on that. At the time, we had some of the highest industrial and commercial tax assessments, tax amounts, taxing compared to other comparable cities, municipalities across Ontario in comparison. So, again, when you've got industries sitting here that you think's never going to go away, it was pretty easy to leave them carrying the, most of the freight and less for residential. To try and attract new industries, we've lost, to try and attract them to replace them, we knew we had to come down in our industrial rates and our commercial rates. It affects not only Owen Sound, but it does affect the county because of the jobs that we're providing, people that are living throughout the county that work in Owen Sound at big industry and, and commercial. And of course, it affects the taxes that are being raised at the county, and getting to that next. We've got a hundred and twenty-five appeals right now in commercial and industrial. So commercial values are dropping, industrial values are dropping, I assume across the county, but I don't know that, but they're definitely dropping in Owen Sound, and that also affects the money that is being generated that's coming to the county from within those commercial businesses in Owen Sound, as well as the money that's coming to the city. So it's, the assessments, the assessment appeals are putting more pressure on residences and other classes, as is that requirement of the province to bring those down. I met with Hugh Simpson last week, and we had this discussion, sort of explained some Within Owen Sound, we've also got lower income levels, we know that when we look at the income comparisons. We also know that we're, our value of our property isn't going up like, like other areas. We've got different costs and things. From our point of view, it doesn't make sense, and I don't see the fairness of transferring from, from farm to residential, given the pressure that our residences are under already. We're talking about fairness, if commercial and industrial are coming down, that was your question, are coming down in their assessment values, should they be getting taxed more because other classifications are going up in value? You know, it's hard to argue that that's fair and with this levels of fairness that the, another layer of complication that's coming from the province, it makes it harder to, to add to industrial or to commercial, which means that our residential is taking more of a hit at a time that we can't really afford to put it on them. So from the city's point of view, it doesn't make sense to transfer from, from farm to residential for us. I don't know if there's any other questions with regard to, I think if Peter kind of hit that point and breezed over it about trying to look at that racial and threw Owen Sound into the mix that I think confused everybody around the table, but I think it's because of that transfer that's happening from industrial, commercial to residential anyway, if I've got that right.
Okay, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. I just wanted, you know, I, there were so many numbers that were floating around over the last few days. I took some time with our treasurer because I wanted to know what a shift, you know, down to point two four would do in the township of Chatsworth. So basically it boiled down to, if we made that move, the every hundred thousand dollars of assessment on a residential property would cost you two dollars and seventy cents. So for the average residence in the township of Chatsworth, it would be an increase, because I think our average is two forty-three, you'd have a tax increase of six dollars and fifty cents. The savings on the farmland portion would be the equivalent of ten dollars per hundred thousand of assessment. So that's how it breaks down, you know, in the township of Chatsworth. So I mean, the question, you know, that I've been running through and tackled is, am I, as a residential property owner, willing to pay six dollars and fifty cents, you know, for growing in gray products, supporting our farm class? And I came to the decision that I'm certainly willing to do that. You know, I want to be able to purchase property, I want to see our farms sustained, I want to see the young farmers be able to continue. It's really about the young farmers. It was interesting, there was a stat, I think Rob had written up, the average age of farmers in Gray County is fifty-five, so we need to support the young farmers, and we're fortunate that we've got a higher than the national average number of young farmers, but this is one way I think we can continue to support that, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council. Just before I get into making another statement, but with regards to table three, so the last two years, because of the shift, now I look at table three, on the residential side, it's decreasing at point four three, I don't know if we're able to pull table three up here, it's decreasing it by point three. This is the third year of the four-year phase-in, so already the first two years has been giving the residential side a break. This is year three, we can't go back, but right now we're at year three, and I think what we're talking around the table is, is trying to level that playing field to say, and I think most people would probably say, for the, we talk about this, what's fair and all that kind of stuff, but to give the residential side, because of the shift, a point, negative point four three, people would say, well, why, why would you have your residential tax portion go down? Would you not at least put it at zero? And I don't know if, as my colleague, Mayor Mackey, has mentioned, if point two four levels the playing field, I don't think that's a bad thing to achieve in the overall picture of. So if you go to, I think, table, table four, and we talked about this earlier on with the, the tax policies that we're talking there, it talked about if we lowered it to point two four, we're going to see in certain municipalities an increase on the residential side, but we've already had two years of decrease. So again, this is year three, and it does talk about, I think it's on table four, about the notional rate, and it was mentioned, referring back to, if you go to table four, is that the notional rate?
Yep.
So if you look at two thousand and eighteen of any given municipality, and I'm only going to say Owen Sound, just because it was brought up, and I'm not trying to say anything, but it was only referred to this morning, if you look at the notional rate in eighteen, so seven million eight eighty, it's dropping to seven million seven ninety-five because of the shift. So we talk about it here, it's going, if we, if we change it to point two four, Owen Sound's going to increase by point one seven, but if we leave it alone, it's going to go down. So again, we talk about, you know, the fairness, and I think, again, Counselor Mackey, I think it was quite interesting you brought that information from your, from your municipality. Mr. Warden, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our farmers here today that do farm in Gray County. I think we are proud of our ag farming community, some would say they're the back of our community. You know, we've seen those, those lawn signs or those stickers on our bumpers saying, farmers feed cities. As we all know, they also feed towns and villages, and are, not only in Gray County, but elsewhere, but certainly they come into the urban areas to buy a lot of their supplies or food, do the, a lot of their spending of their money. Along with farmers, there's farmers' markets, and they do spend dollars in our community. Up to a few years back, the gross farm receipts of a farm up to two hundred and fifty thousand, this is from Statscan, that up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of off, or of gross farm income was from off-farm income to support those farms. It took up to two hundred and fifty thousand gross farm receipts before it started to be sustainable as far as a farm operation. So a lot of those family farms out there are there today and continue to be out today because of off-farm income, whether you, whether both spouses have a job or however, it's a tough job to support the farm and the farm operation. We also know that we have other communities that are, you know, that are incorporating C4s, shops throughout our, our Gray County, and why is that? That's how they can afford the farms, they need that off-farm or diversified farm income to support the high price of farms. Farmers take risks every year, we talk about this range of fairness. You know, just more recently, geez, if you're a canola farmer, with forty percent of your Canadian market being closed off, I think you're going to be scratching your head what you're going to be growing this year, and that's, and that's just something that just happened in the last month. We know the cast croppers of the past, last year, snow came early, a lot of them got caught with their corn and soybeans out, and I'm sure it certainly affected their ability for those yields. Also, it would increase the cost of drying those, those products to be able to supply those, to supply those to the market that they're either contract with or the open market. We also know there's the heavy cost of fertilizer and seed, that's also required. Remember, this is a weather Remember, this is a weather-related business, and we know what, how that can affect a lot of those where other businesses have a roof over their head and it's a controlled environment. So, there's a lot of risk involved, as we all know. As we all know, in the past, in two thousand and three, farmers were affected by the Mad Cowell, a situation that, that affected Canada, and how that, you know, you talk about mental health, it sure, it did affect a lot. And I know we're, we're looking more and more at mental health with regards to farmers, and that certainly had a great effect. Just more recently, and it could happen anywhere, with the flooding in Nebraska, where over, maybe, some reports are of over a million cattle were lost. You know, we certainly reach out to those farmers in that, in that area. As we know, the assessment of the average has increased over seventy percent here in Gray County.
That was over a hundred percent.
And, you know, we see the, the averages, and no criticism to you, Kevin, for what you do, and I know you do a great job in bringing your reports forward, but we do hear it from, from, from those that are out there. I will say that also, we talk about the future of farming. It's, it's getting tougher and tougher for those young, as the average, as you say, Counselor Mackey, that the average farmer is fifty-five years old. I know the high price of, of farms and equipment, why would you even bother? I think it was of note, of Counselor Millen had said last, County Council, that part of our mandate here in the county of Gray is to support the egg, eggs, the egg sector. And I think we have been doing that with the, with the, with the egg office in Markdale, and we have, you know, greatly increased that budget this year. So, I, I leave it for further discussion of my colleagues around the table to talk about this. I think we talk, it goes back to the, the, the whole part about the range of fairness, and I'm certainly glad that we're having this conversation this morning. And I, I know there's a lot of, a lot of information to digest, but I think in the sense that we see other counties have reduced it more recently, and I know you'll be pointed on a chart that Dufferin County reduced theirs to point two-three. And so, I think that other counties are seeing that, they are also seeing the same effect within their, within their county. I will make one quote that was in our communication that we passed this morning. It was from Roy in Virginia Love. The tax increase to the farm is a large burden. It demonstrates to their farming community that the support, that farmers need to continue to provide a life-sustaining service, which is feeding the people. And that was in our information this morning. So, from there, Mister Warden and County Council, I look forward to the further discussion, and I certainly will be supporting a reduction in below point two-five.
Okay. So, Counselor Millen, I'll, I'll come to you in a second. Kevin, I wonder how we want to proceed here. Do we want to, maybe have you finish your report? I, I know we're sort of stalled on the farm tax piece, but there is more to your report. Counsel, what's the wish? Generally, are you okay if Kevin finishes his report, or do you want to make more comments with respect to the farm tax piece and then move on? I'll go first of all to Counselor Millen.
I'm fine waiting till he's done his report in entirety.
Okay. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Through you, Warden, I do have a question with regard to the property or the farm tax ratio. Would you like me to pose that now or at the end? It's at, at your will, obviously.
Go ahead now.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, I just want to ensure and make it really clear that, that I very much support the agricultural sector and the value that they bring to our economy, our society, and the quality of life overall for us. And I want to ensure that our agricultural society or agricultural sector is sustainable, and I think that is something that as Gray County councilors, we can, we can contribute to that. So, Kevin, your report was really thorough, and, and I do appreciate that, but could you provide a, a bit of a, an extension or, or explain more if County Council was looking at a reduction of the, the farm property tax ratio from the, a one percent or a two percent? Recognizing you have some information in the charts, but I'm just looking for more of a, an impact discussion. Thank you, Warden.
Yeah.
So, it's Table thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah. There's that, that point two-four, that what you see for the shift to the residential would be that point one-seven.
Sorry, Kevin. I'm going to ask you to speak closer to the mic. I'm looking at people at the back of the room, and I think some of you are struggling to hear. Yes, I see some nods.
That point two-four, the very, that very first row, residential, you see the percent, that's the point one-seven percent, which, which would be, what would be going to the res, okay? And roughly, and my, my calculation is what that would, that point two-four for, on, on average for the farm, you'd be looking at about a thirty-seven dollar decrease to the, to the county tax rate there then, okay? Or the county and municipal, I should say, so, which, you know, when you say, when, when we mentioned two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand shift being ninety-three dollars, that's what, you get that with a third there, right? So, does that answer your question?
Yeah. I was just looking for, um, just that more expanded conversation and clarity for the audience as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, I guess, when I was up to twenty pages, I was wondering how much more do I put in here? But I, you know, we could have calculated actual residential rates and stuff and threw those two, like we had those. I, I just didn't have them in my report, and I don't have them in my hand right now, but, okay.
Counselor Carlton?
I just have a comment. This is, some of this I find slightly over my head, and I struggle to understand it. So, I went to Treasurer in Georgian Bluffs, and she came back with what the rates are, and they're fairly minimal as to what it would go to the residential tax rate. What she says is that most farmers in Georgian Bluffs would not save much money, if any, because it would be pretty rare that a farm doesn't have a barn, a house, or a commercial operation. So, it would shift the tax rate from one area of the farm to another and really not change what their taxes are. She also referenced the Treasurer's meeting, and in two thousand and twenty, the plan being to look at the farm, industrial, and multi-residential rates altogether, so that they're looked at as a whole rather than piecemeal. So, I just say that as, I think that for Georgian Bluffs, it's not making a huge difference.
Okay. So, Kevin, I think this is the time that we can continue with your presentation, and then we'll finish our discussion.
The next one is the tax reductions for mandated subclasses. And, and the county has historically used the legal default reduction of thirty percent for the commercial and thirty-five percent for the industrial property classes. And the alternative is to have a, a rate between those two, that you could set them similar and stuff. We've, we've used this rate historically. This has been kind of the provincial norm. This is that vacant and excess land that Peter talked about. That's the, the reduction they get here for that. It, it was always been, you know, be careful when you play with these ratios, is what, if you make vacant, uh, commercial land or industrial more than it is, if it was left in the residential class, you can cause impacts that you weren't intending and stuff. We, as well as this is part of that vacant unit, that's, they get those reductions based on those percentages here. And that has been discussed, as Peter said, at, my report went out Friday, and on Tuesday at four o'clock, out came the reg saying, now we can look at that vacant unit rebate again. And my motion kind of reads funny after Peter saying that. So, um, with budgets being done and everything, I'd like to revisit, and, and there's a bit of anomaly here with On Sound of what they've done with that vacant, but I would like to, to work with MTE and come back and, and propose some items that we could do here with that vacant unit and, and seek, seek your consultation. But for now, what I'm saying is we, we continue with the thirty and the thirty-five percent that we have historically and, and, but bring back for, and that way we can plan for, if we want to do something for 2020, we have to get something in by August first of nineteen with the minister and, and to the ministry, and we can work with the Treasurers too and understand what's going to take place. So, I, I would recommend we continue with, with our historical process here for this. The new agro-food subclass, Peter talked about this, that's very select, the criteria. I, I find it a bit confusing that the province, when all of this effort for two-hundred-and-fifty properties, it just doesn't seem like something got missed here between what was intended by the province, the government, and what's getting interpreted into, into what it is. With only thirteen properties here, I, I feel we're giving such a, a special tax treatment to so few that I, I think it's going to make others very argumentative, and it's going to, it's going to eat up staff time. So, for, for nineteen, I would like to stay away from this and see what comes out of this yet, and let, let the system see what happens with it and stuff, instead of posing one property owner against a so-select few here. So, that's my recommendation, is that we, we don't exercise this option for 2019, for those thirteen properties in essence, okay? Tax reductions for farmland waiting development subclass, we've historically always hear that first, that type-one with subdivision registered may be taxed between twenty-five percent and seventy-five percent of the residential tax rate. We've always said if it continues to be farmed, we'll give it the, the tax ratio of the farm, that twenty-five percent. And once it had a building permit issued, it would, it would go to a hundred percent of the class that it, it's in. The county has very, very little of it. I was speaking to Randy Schertz about this, like the cost of getting property to this stage, even type-one, you don't want to be sitting there farming it. It's, it's, there's too much investment in it to, to want, so. But again, I, we've got about eighteen hundred dollars worth of tax in this whole thing. So, I, I would just continue. If someone is in that state that they're still farming, I, I would give them that, that, that ratio. Optional classes of property, nothing's been identified here of introducing. We, we did a number of years ago, do that resort condo class and the commercial, that was a request from the town of Blue Mountains at that time. And back in two thousand and twelve, we, we put in the new multi-res class that we were trying to assist, or incentive for new multi-res to be built in the county. It's part of our affordable housing strategy, but this time, there's been nothing brought to my attention of, of looking at creating a new class on, so. Tax rate, once, once you've decided on all these items before us, then, once I know what the, the ratios and the discounts are and stuff, I can then actually calculate tax rates. So, what you did pass in a budget was the amount of revenue that I have to, to, to raise from, from assess, from those assessed valued properties. Once you decide on these, on the tools, then I can apportion that and actually calculate the tax rate. So, that, that's what this is saying here, that based on the recommendation of the two thousand and nineteen policy statements, that I, I develop the tax rates and, okay. Other policies, we have a number of other policies here from, for, for tax relief and rebates. The one I wanted to bring attention to was the, in regards to the occupied, used and occupied by branches of the Royal Canadian Legion and similar organizations. The county did have a program here that made those properties owned by the Legions that were being used for their clubhouse, so they would be exempt from all taxes. We had that in the, in the, in the budget, or the fall budget bill that was introduced by the province. They've made that now in there, that, that they will be that, and it's used or occupied by those, if, and it's not based on ownership. So, so all those facilities then will have that ability. They didn't get on the tax rule with impact at that stage, so there'll be notices sent out for those properties. So, yeah, but that's, so our bylaws still exist there, but it, it was giving that relief anyway, so it's no harm, and we'll, we'll deal with that in, in the future and get it, get it off the books. But it, yeah, that's been looked after. The business class tax capping options, what County Council has done here, and, and this has always been, is trying to get, wind up this three-year program that's now, what, twenty-one years going strong. And just to understand that capping, and the way the county has done it, it's, the county is the banker in the middle of it all, and, and any increases that you can't pass on to those business properties that were capped, were then funded by those properties that had decreases and stuff. So, it was really holding back those that had, you know, CVAs that were dropping, et cetera, that, from getting their, their relief from that, and they were funding that. So, it's nice to see that we're down to about, we're projecting about twenty-five thousand, but we still, what we hear, the recommendation here is we use all the optional tools to, to get this wound up as soon as we can. So, we're down, we're down to just the one class and the commercial there, and we're, we're heading into year two of the four-year phase-out, so we're getting there, so. But we'll continue on with all the options there. So, that is all the tax policy items in that report, and my motion is there first for Council's consideration.
Excellent. So, we turn now to questions. Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mister Warden, and thank you, Kevin, for your report. Excellent, as always. First, I want to comment on what Mister, Mister McKay said. I've seen those statistics on the age, the average age of farmers. Fifty-five is not that old. Let's just be clear on that. All right. So, what I would like to ask Mister Warden is an amendment. I would propose an amendment to reduce the farm tax rate to point two-four.
Then I'll ask for a seconder. Okay, Counselor Woodbury, seconded. So, we'll, we'll have discussion on the amendment, if there is any, and we'll vote on that, and onward.
Thank you, Mister Warden. Kevin's report says that tax policy decisions should not be based on strategic policy objective and not based, or should be based on strategic policy objective and not based on shifts in assessment. In normal circumstances, that makes an abundance of sense. But farm values have skyrocketed in the last number of years and so show no sign of stopping relation to other classes. So, I think we're in extraordinary times, and we need to do something extraordinary in response. In the made-in-gray economic development strategy, as I alluded to two weeks ago, it was adopted by this council in April of two thousand and fifteen, and it states agriculture, farms, and local food are essential components to the economic health and diversity of Gray County. And part of that agro-food strategy was a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. One of the strengths identified through that strategy was that historically, Gray County has extended political support and a tradition of supporting land, or food producers in this county. And I hope that is not under threat for the sake of a few dollars, because let's be honest, I don't think the changes that we're proposing here today is either going to enhance or endanger anybody's ability to pay their property taxes on any of the classes that are changed through what the amendment has proposed. I think this is entirely about recognizing a major element of our economy and our community. And I am prepared to support the amendment, obviously, because I made the amendment. And I think we either need to demonstrate that we're standing with our farmers and our ag community, or we're not. And this, in my mind, is a very concrete, very directed way to show support for those people and that industry. Thank you.
For the speakers? Counselor Bartnicki.
Through you, Mister Warden. Most of us choose to live in Gray County, rural or urban, because we're surrounded by a unique and beautiful natural environment that includes one of Ontario's most significant farming areas. And those farms provide, provide directly and indirectly to our economy, as Counselor Millen suggested. To sustain both long-term, we need to support continued growth, diversification, and success of all those who own and work on our farms. Thank you.
Q? Other speakers? Counselors, however?
Yes, and thank you, Kevin, for that very informative report and all the information that you provided, and also thank you, Peter, for the earlier presentation. And it's very compliment, comprehensive and underlines many of the issues with current value assessment and taxation in a multi-tier municipality. And I was particularly noted the, the statement which Counselor Millen referred to, which said that tax policy decisions should be made based on strategic policy objectives of the county and not based on shifts in assessment. And I think we should make it, and I think we, we do make, keeping our farms viable, a strategic policy assessment. So, changing the, shifting the assessment is, you know, I think, part of that strategic plan. So, given that, though, we, we talk about current value assessment in a more general way, in your, you talk about it in your report, in that it was implemented in nineteen ninety-eight. And we also heard earlier today- also heard earlier today that a lot, that really hasn't been looked at in detail. So the fact we're discussing, among other things, the reduction of the farm tax ratio to less than .25 shows the system really isn't working for our farmers. It isn't bringing fair tax treatment to them, and I maintain it isn't working for others as well, such as our seniors, our long-term residents on fixed incomes, who find their taxes suddenly soaring due to the rise in property values. Is it fair that a senior has to sell the home that they've lived in for many years because they can't afford to pay the taxes, just because property values have soared in her particular neighborhood? Her estate may benefit, but how does it help her today? The other, there are even more fundamental problems, which I've highlighted in a couple of slides, which with the indulgence, I know it's not part of the procedural bylaw, but I'd like to put up.
So we're speaking to the amendment. If the slides you feel you want to...
Well, there is part of the amendment in there.
Just let me finish. If you feel that the slides are appropriate for the comments that you want to make with respect to the amended motion that's being debated, then yes.
Yeah, part of the slides do refer to the amendment. So if we can jump to them, and we'll go right to slide number four, which is conclusions. There's something, and we'll talk about that, that's probably more general, but the average price increases in 2017 and 2018 for homes sold in Gray Highlands have gone up 27%, in Chatsworth 23%, in Town of Blue Mountains 12%. Given this rapid escalation, this problem isn't going to go away. It's here, it's not, and that's in one year. So over the next four year cycle, if you multiply those numbers by four, you know, you're talking about 100%. So by changing the tax ratio today, it's kind of akin to putting a Band-Aid on this problem. It's kind of like akin to putting a Band-Aid on skin cancer and saying, this is a cure. So I don't think it's a cure. I think we can help our farmers, and I'm certainly supportive of that. I mean, as Councillor Mackey pointed out earlier, this isn't a huge amount of money being transferred. I think in the Town of Blue Mountains, it means about $10 per the average home to be transferred over from residential to, from farms to residential. So I'd like to support the amendment of Councillor Mill.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments? Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Warden Hicks. This is a very symbolic, a symbolic vote which demonstrates Gray County councillor's support of our agricultural community, and I would encourage each and every one of you to consider this very hard, and a vote for the amendment to reduce the farm tax ratio.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. So with that said, I'll call for the vote on the amended motion, just the amendment, which is about reducing the farm tax ratio from 25 to 24%. Everybody understands? So I call the question. All those in favor of the motion? And all those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, on to the main motion, which is about everything else except the farm piece that was recommended. Correct, yes. So any further discussion on the main motion? I'm sorry. Correct, it is amended, yes. I apologize. So councillor Soever, are you prepared to move it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking for a seconder, seconded by councillor Bartniki. Okay, now discussion. Councillor McQueen.
Just if, I don't know if you're able to pull up table three, but of the, if, sorry, I'm trying to look at my table here, I don't know if we're able to pull it up or not. Of the table three, it shows the revenue in 2018, or I guess it's for 2000, yeah, 2018. It showed of the $56 million that we brought in, 46 million came from residential side. So it's a big portion of that, 56 is, is, yeah, if you can find it there.
About 82%, I think.
Yeah, I guess it is. So I know we've had a lot of debate about the other classes, but your residential is your big, there it is right there, is your big portion of what is your generator of our taxation, taxation money within the county. And it's interesting just to look at all those, how it breaks down of what, and you know, and I think it goes back to what councillor Mackey said earlier on, of the other previous discussion. It's maybe small potatoes compared to the big part of the 46 million. So, thank you.
Okay, councillor Soever?
Yes, that's a very good point, because, you know, we're relying a lot on our residential tax base, and, you know, it'd be interesting to know how that compares with other surrounding counties and counties that have more robust economies in some parts. I mean, but looking at the report as a whole, as I said, it's a great report, raised a lot of questions in my mind. And if we can go back to the slides, some of the more fundamental problems are, which we, brings me back to my mining days, when we started looking at data, we always wonder is, how good is the underlying data? So everything is based on current value assessment. So the question is, how good is the data? And with the indulgence of council, if we could go to the slides? I'll go to the first. Okay, so is the system working? So as was pointed out earlier today, there hasn't been much of review. And what is it doing to people? We touched, I touched on it a little bit earlier. I had an elderly gentleman coming into my office the other day, and he said, I don't understand how this works. I've gone to real estate listings, I've looked at them, they don't bear any resemblance to the current value assessment. And I tried to explain to them, we're in the third year of an assessment cycle, so naturally prices have gone up quite a bit in the Town of Blue Mountains, also in Gray Highlands and other places. But when I started looking at the data, and when staff confirmed it for me, found that there was a huge range of differences. Properties sold from anywhere from 116% to 290% of their mark, of their assessed value. So I did a little digging, and I looked at two properties in particular that caught my eye. And one of them was actually very close to where I live, so I know that one pretty well. So here's the tale of two properties. So they both had very similar assessments, but when you look at the sale price, and these were all sales in the last half of last year, one sold for about 33% more than its value. The other sold for nearly three times its value. And you start to wonder, when you look at that, is, you know, what kind of quality of service are we getting? Because, like, I mean, you look at the pictures of the tour of that Century Farm home, that's completely renovated, has a finished basement, that's a huge amount of money. And you look at the interior, and you say, you could put this in the middle of the swamp, and it'd still be worth $714,000. So it raised a lot of questions. So anyway, if we can go to the next slide. So I reached the conclusion that maybe there is something wrong. Now, realizing that this is a limited sample of eight properties, and maybe we're catching the very few anomalies that are out there. You know, we pay these, we pay MPAC 1.8 million a year, that's the Gray County bill. And, you know, we, I think we should audit it and check to see what kind of a range of values are we getting? Are we getting a fair assessment across the entire county? And I know that in Chatsworth, they've already tried to find their missing assessment. But if they try to find it, and they do find missing assessment there, all they're going to do is increase their share of county taxes. They can lower their mill rate to reflect it at the municipal level, but because they're a small portion of the county, county will, you know, the adjustment county can make will never match their increase in assessment that they find. So I think what, what I'm really saying is, you know, the system, and we talked about what happens when values increase, we're going to see huge increases next turn, if these sales prices are any indication. Because in that last table, they were an average two times what the 2016 assessment was. So when 2020 comes, we can expect that to happen, even more in the Gray Highlands and Chatsworth, where it's probably going to be, you know, 27% in one year, according to one real estate. So that's 100%. So really, I think we need to look at the whole system and see, is it working for people? Just because you live in a neighborhood where all of a sudden you got big fancy homes coming in, the value of your property goes up. If you want to keep living where you've lived for 50 years, your property taxes are going to go up, and you may not be able to. And it's the same problem the farmers have. So what I'd like to do is propose a couple of amendments, which I've talked to the CAO about earlier, and so she's mellowed my words a bit. And I said, the Gray County requests that the Government of Ontario review whether taxation using the current value assessment system is achieving its policy objectives. And then I said, or is that a cancer on our communities, which unfairly targets our farmers, seniors, and long-term residents living on fixed incomes, merely because they happen to live in local areas with rapidly increasing property values? And then three was that staff carry out a survey comparing recent sale prices and CVAs for representative properties, suite of properties across each of the municipalities in Gray County, and report back to as whether MPAC's CVAs are actually reflecting current values. And are we getting the service that MPAC is supposed to provide for the 1.8 million? Now, it may be, like, I know the people at MPAC work very hard, but it may be they don't have the resources to keep up with these rapid fluctuations. And actually, we heard earlier today, they're doing less physical assessments. And I kind of suspect that that Century Farm home that was so far under assessed, it's quite a bit off the road. I kind of think that value came out of a computer model without anybody seeing that exceptional property. But these are the kind of things we'd like to check, because if we don't have good data going in, as we say, mining garbage in, garbage out. So, and then we can also use this to kind of anticipate what changes we see coming, and we can, we can kind of anticipate this, so we can start thinking about policies before MPAC's numbers arrive. And then all of a sudden, we're behind the eight ball, because we're going, well, now what are we going to do? Values have gone up twofold here, onefold here, and there's going to be huge shifts, and then we'll be back here talking about these problems again. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Soever, so we have had, I think I heard you suggest two amendments to the main motion, one of which I see up on the screen, the second I do not see on the screen. Oh, is there two? What about the one? The survey?
I'd like to add that, but perhaps that can be done after we talk to MPAC.
Okay. So what you're suggesting then is two amendments, which we see on the screen, one that we request that the Government of Ontario review whether the taxation using current value assessment is achieving its policy objectives, and secondly, that we invite someone from MPAC to come and attend council and answer some questions. Subsequent to that, you may raise other recommendations. Okay, so I would then...
Staff to work till after that.
Thank you. So you're moving that. I would need a seconder for your amendments. Councillor, geez, Carlton, thank you. So it's on the floor. Is there any discussion on the amendments? Then I'll call the question. All those, we're voting just on the amendment now, okay? Those two amendments. All those in favor of the amendments? Any opposed? That's carried. Now we're back to the main, to the main motion again. Is there any discussion? Oh, do we now have to move the main motion again? Okay, great. So we are ready now to vote on the main motion unless there is further discussion? Everybody, yeah. So we're voting on the main motion, which is, includes the two amendments that we have approved. Okay? All right. So all those in favor of the main motion? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Kevin?
God, I don't want to do this, but that last part, the staff informed council any flexibility may be provided in 2019, that was made noticed at Tuesday at 4:00 PM. So, and I've said that, so can we just, like a friendly amendment, that staff bring back a report to council on the flexibility provided by the provincial government and to seek input and direction?
Fair enough. Good. All right. We are going to break, and we'll be back after we've had some nourishment.